Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, July 10th, 2023. Commissioners' Court is meeting in regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the flag which stands one nation under God, indivisible, universal.
Next, we'll receive an invocation from Pastor Anthony Bedoya.
Welcome, Pastor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All of you are doing great this beautiful Monday morning. Let's pray. Lord, first of all, thank you for putting us on the wake-up list this morning. Thank you for giving us life, and for those of us who have put our faith in you, thank you for giving us eternal life. Lord, you are welcome here in this room and in this building. I pray that your Holy Spirit would fill this room as well as this building. And Father God, I pray for Judge Samaniego, Commissioner Olgin, Commissioner Leon, Commissioner Coronado, and Commissioner Stout. I pray that you would give them boldness and courage to make decisions based on your truth and what your word says. I pray that they would not rebel against you but submit to you in every area of their lives. I pray that you would protect them from the enemy, and I pray that you would surround them with individuals that will lead them to you and encourage them to make decisions and vote on matters based on what you want. I pray that they would be more concerned about what you think and not man or this world. Remind them, Lord, that no matter what, you are always there for them, and I pray that they would come to know you as Lord and Savior if they don't already. And Lord, I pray for our country, our county, our nation. Something is seriously wrong when the world is offended by everything but sin. Bring us back to you, Lord, and heal our people and our nation. I pray that all those that have rejected you realize how much you love them, no matter what. We thank you for your mercy, your grace, and your faithfulness. Even when we're not faithful to you, you still don't turn your back on us. And Lord, I pray for our employees. Give them the energy and the peace that they need, especially those that are going through hardships. Protect them, and please watch over them and their families. I pray for our department heads and our elected officials. Help them as well and keep them humble. And Lord, give Wally a huge hug for us, and please remind him and let him know, Lord, that we miss him very much. And God bless America, and God bless Texas. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, for taking the time for mentioning Wally. He means so much to us, and thank you for your prayers to him and his family, and thank you for your kind words. It really, you know, we welcome you here always, and it always starts us off in the best way.
Thank you. God bless you all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you.
Judge, do you have any opening remarks for us this morning?
Yeah, just want to thank everybody for being here on behalf of myself and Commissioners. We welcome you to Commissioners' Court, and we thank you for being here today, wishing everybody a great day and just an awesome week. So, thank you very much for being here. Thank you.
I'd also like to welcome our ASL interpreters this morning, Selena Salum and Cristal Olivas.
Cristal is new with us. Welcome.
Item number four is the Consent Agenda, composed of items 4A through 4AC. We'd like to request a one-week postponement of item 4F, which is the quarterly report for the Housing Authority. Actually, if we could postpone that for two weeks, please. Two-week postponement for 4F. And then, item 4R, we would like to request a one-week postponement. That item is to approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Third Amendment to the ATM Placement Service Agreement with Cardtronics USA Incorporated to clarify and provide the County of El Paso with an updated list of ATM locations under the current contract. There's no fiscal impact. Contract number 2023-0455. And once again, this will be a one-week postponement. Are there any other items that members of the Court or the public would like to pull for individual discussion?
Commissioners? So moved with the adjustments that have been made?
Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Coronado is absent. Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Brings us to item number five, Public Comment. We have a few speakers this morning signed up. First up this morning, we have Mr. Jaime Hernandez. And just for everybody's notification, Public Comment is limited to five minutes. You're welcome to start whenever you're ready, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you. Good morning, honorable judges and representatives of this court. I thank you first for giving me the opportunity to speak to you and to the public. My name is Jaime Hernandez. I am 35 years old and was born and raised here in this beautiful city of El Paso, Texas. My wife's name is Myra. My son's name is Edwin. My daughter's name is Luz. I work as a part-time art teacher and a maintenance worker as well. I am currently trying to join the Navy, and I believe that if it's God's will, that will happen. I know that I have been given a new opportunity at life because since I was 13 years old to the age of 30, I wrestled and battled with drug addiction, alcoholism, pornography, anxiety, jealousy, depression, and more. You can probably imagine the bad consequences my actions brought and the suffering I caused my family and friends. In fact, in the past, I was here in this courthouse for not-so-good reasons, every time pleading and promising God for help. During those processes, I found out that I could call on Jesus for help, and every time, no matter what, He brought hope and freedom to my life by freeing me from things I knew were wrong but cannot stop doing without His help. During those years of recovery and relapse, I heard many testimonies similar to mine, as well as some more difficult ones. The common denominator in each has been that when I or others call on Jesus for help, He is there to free us from any addiction, whether it be to drugs, alcohol, sexual disorders, anxiety, depression. He can help. That's why, to honor Jesus, I designed a flag that measures four feet by six feet with a white background, gold cross with a red trim around the cross. The white signifies Jesus' purity. The red trim signifies His bloodshed to clean our sins, and the gold signifies and honors Him as the King of kings and Lord of lords. I am sure that many people will look at this flag and find hope in it, but the cross is a symbol of torture. But gratefully, through what Jesus Christ did on that cross, many people like me have found freedom from their struggles. I would like to see this flag flying one day all over the country, and for that matter, all over the world. But for now, it would be a great start to have it flown here at this courthouse for any time or any day possible, but I would prefer the last week of July. And maybe one day, make the whole month of July Hope and Freedom in Jesus' Month for all the people that have found true hope and freedom in the Lord Jesus. I have made the flag. I can leave it here at the appropriate time. If you like, please contact me. My phone number is (915) 706-9860, and my email address is jimhern87@gmail.com. Thank you, judges, once again for this time, and may God keep blessing you in Jesus' mighty name. May I show you the flag, judges?
Absolutely.
I painted it myself. I still got work to do.
Thank you. And we appreciate you and thank you for your testimony, and we wish you the best of luck on all of this. Thank you. Absolutely. Yes.
Who do I leave it with, sir? I made a copy for each one of you.
Thank you. Thank you. God bless you, too.
Next, we have Ms. Elizabeth Crawford. Ms. Crawford?
Thank you so much.
Welcome, Elizabeth.
Hi, thank you so much. Thank you. I wanted to comment about the whole situation with the Walmart shooting. I've been trying to keep up in the news with what's going on with the trial and just been watching all the comments. I want to say, first of all, that I am so sorry. I had only really truly heard about it in passing before. I hadn't really known the details, and I don't, I could never fully understand what you all as a community are going through and what the individuals who are specifically impacted are going through. But on a small level, I can understand because I'm from outside New York City, and I remember the agony after 9/11. So I am so sorry. In reading the news, I read the comments that people are making, the cries of agony, the cries for justice. I believe scripturally in the Bible, we're told that the role of government is for the punishment of evil doers for the protection of the people. And there's comfort in the fact that no matter what happens with this trial, that true justice will ultimately take place before God. Ultimately, every single person will either end up in one of two places. They'll either be in hell for all eternity, suffering, punishment for their sins, or they'll be forgiven because of what Christ has done. Several years back in New Jersey, I went to a messianic congregation for several years. They're Jewish people who believe Jesus is Messiah, and they had several speakers who were Arabic, who had been Muslim. The one man was a professor of Islam in Cairo, Egypt, had memorized the Quran, hated the Jews. His name was Mustafa originally. His name was changed eventually to Mark for his protection. He was just mentally, physically sick over to some questions he had, and he is in Islam. His pharmacist gave him a New Testament, and he was saved after reading the words of Jesus. He had to flee Egypt, and I heard this man speak in this messianic church, and he appealed to us as Christians to have compassion. In no way does this alleviate or minimize the guilt of what is done, but he urged us to have compassion in seeing that not only were the people in those towers in 9/11 victims, but in many ways also were the hijackers because they were victims of a lying ideology that jihad would send them directly to paradise. So he urged us to have compassion on those who are raised in this false ideology. The reality is that every criminal, every person will either spend eternity in hell or in heaven. Does this minimize any act? No. But when we look at Calvary, the body of the Lord Jesus Christ was torn to shreds, and it was a bloody, gory crime scene. And who did it? The Jews, yes. The Gentiles, yes. People from every tribe, tongue, people and nation, yes. My sins, yes. And when we go to that hill of Galgatha, we read, "As many were astonished at thee, his visage was so marred more than any man, and his form more than the sons of men; so shall he sprinkle many nations; the kings shall shut their mouths at him." So whenever we're tempted to harbor hatred in our hearts for a killer, for a criminal, for any person, there are two things we need to remember: that there will be justice, one way or the other, and the words of Scripture, "All we like sheets have gone astray; we have turned everyone to his own way; and the Lord has laid on him, on Christ, the iniquity of us all." So what took place on August 3rd, 2019, was seen by a holy God, and justice will reign, and we can take comfort either in the punishment, eternal punishment, or in what Christ accomplished on Calvary for sinners who would one day turn to Him in saving faith. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Our final speaker this morning is County Administrator Betsy Keller.
Thank you, Caesar. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce an intern in my office. We're very excited and proud to have Paola Martinez working in my office. Lorena, do you want to come up and say a few words to introduce her? And then, Paola, if you want to say anything?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Lorena Rodriguez, County Administration. Just wanted to introduce our new intern, Paola Martinez. She is a junior at UTEP studying political science with a minor in legal reasoning. We're looking forward to having her, you know, just help us with all our goals for our strategic plan and other research and projects.
Thank you. Hi, Paola.
If she could come and say a few words?
Welcome.
I'm very excited to be participating in this new intern program. I really hope that I can get new knowledge and skills out of this, and I'm very... that I can get new knowledge and skills out of this, and I'm very glad to be up here. Thank you, guys.
Well, Paola, you know, our interns are really significant throughout our organization now working for us. There are several interns that started as interns, so we're very proud of that, and we wish you all the best. And I think you're gonna, with Lorena and everybody else, you're gonna have a wonderful experience.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I told her this morning that she has no better mentor than Lorena, who started as an intern.
Thank you all.
Moving on to item number six from purchasing. Approve the purchase of replacement and installation of the automatic transfer switch for the sheriff's downtown detention facility of the county of El Paso using Region 19 Job Order Contract 217411, awarded to Keystone Contractors and Engineers of El Paso, Texas for a grand total of $1,282,561.33. Purchasing approved on June 7, 2023. Funding is available in CPTN 23DDF renovation transfer switch.
Welcome, Karen.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Davidson, the county purchasing agent. This is a request to the court to approve a purchase of the replacement and installation of automatic transfer switches. This is for the Sheriff's Department. It is for the downtown jail facility, and it is a critical infrastructure project that we need to get moving. That's why we put it on today's agenda. So we are asking to award it to the Keystone Contract and Engineers in El Paso, Texas for the $1.282,561.33. And I certainly have facilities on if you have any questions for the site, and I can answer anything on the procurement. This is a cooperative methodology in which we're asking for this award.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments? A move to approve.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You, too.
Before we go into executive session, I'd like to request the deletion of two items from executive. Item number 7C and 7D. Let me read those in real quick. 7C is to discuss litigation in the case regarding El Paso County, Texas, and the state of Texas versus Volkswagen Group of America Incorporated. County Attorney's Case Number 024615PL, cause number 2015DCV3910, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. And item 7D, discuss litigation styled Michael Flores versus County of El Paso, Texas, cause number 2019DCV2227, County Attorney Case Number 019919LD, pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. If we could please have a motion to delete these items?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, Commissioners Court will recess into executive session to discuss items 7A and 7B pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Commissioners Court will reconvene to take official action.
It's important for your children to stay current on all their routine vaccines. Also, children five and older are now eligible for the COVID-19 vaccine. I'm current on all my vaccines, and I also get the COVID vaccine, so I and my loved ones can be protected. You and your kids should get the vaccine, too. And if you've already gotten the vaccine, you should get your booster. For your child's routine vaccines, visit ephealth.com. We know how much you love your children, so remember, don't hesitate, vaccinate. Es importante que sus hijos tengan todas sus vacunas. Además de la vacuna rutina, los niños mayores de cinco años ahora son elegibles para la vacuna de COVID-19. La vacuna COVID-19 es gratis. Para las vacunas rutinas de sus hijos, visite ephealth.com. Sabemos cuánto amas a tus hijos, así que recuerda, no lo dudes, vacunate.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business, but we also keep true to our southern hospitality with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Today, we celebrate one of my favorite projects, which is First Time Water. So thank you for coming and joining us for this wonderful event.
Well, this is, you know, First Time Water, and you can imagine any First Time anything. And I'm glad the community gets to see this because, you know, we live very blessed, and sometimes some of the areas require some of the basic needs. So very excited about this, especially the network that it took with the county and Congresswoman Escobar, the Net Bank, I mean, everybody that participated. And to give people an opportunity to live the way they should live is just exciting.
This is very exciting. This is really the first time that Hillcrest Center, which is a community about a half a mile from the city limits off of Montana, that is finally going to receive water. The plotting was approved, believe it or not, back by the court in 1950. So we're talking about 150 homes, 309 people that live out there. As we move forward, this is something that I've pushed for, that the folks out there receive as many of the amenities that they deserve.
I am so happy for all of the families who are finally going to, not today, but very soon, be able to turn on their faucets and receive water. That is the dignity that each person in our country deserves, and I'm very proud that the Biden administration and Congress was able to deliver that.
That's the goal of the county. Our lane is accessibility to everything: transportation, healthcare, and of course, water and sewage, like everyone should have.
Well, today, we're celebrating Earth Day, so we have lots of festivities, lots of activities for families, things for the children to do. And we also are, have completed a major tree planting project to bring some more shade and tree diversity here to Scatate Park.
And so we brought our families. We brought our coworkers. This event is amazing. There's a lot of local vendors. There's a lot of community attendance. It's fun.
So we want to create awareness and education for the community to continue to respect and care and great stewardship of the earth. We chose Scatate Park because we've recently done tree planting events in the past. There's definitely a need for an increase of vegetation here, and trees are the best way to provide shade and combat the urban heat island effect.
Well, we've got over here, we've got different crafts and activities, setting up the pavilion so that it's a fun place to go to. We have movies that represent what's going on to help protect the environment.
I would hope we are able to do this multiple years. This is fantastic. This is great for Mother Earth. It's great for the kids to come out and participate and learn about taking care of the planet and, you know, being sustainable.
It's the one day where I think we bring awareness to, we share something, no matter our political backgrounds, our religious beliefs. The earth is one thing we share in common. We all breathe the same air. We share the same water, so we can love and take care of the earth together.
So like many rural communities here in Torneo, most neighborhoods do not have sidewalks. And unfortunately, that can cause a safety hazard. So when kids are walking to school, they don't have sidewalks to walk on. If there's a heavy rain, there's no sidewalk for the kids to be able to walk through, and they end up having to walk through muddy streets to get to school.
Definitely. You know, I grew up here, and, you know, for many, many decades, you know, Torneo has really needed sidewalks. And when this project came along, we were so excited that we were identified as one of the entities that was going to be receiving these sidewalks.
At the county, we've been extraordinarily blessed that we've been able to obtain funding for various projects for the community out here in Torneo. So the funding allowed us to provide a little over three miles worth of sidewalks here in Torneo and to focus in the areas that, for example, children travel the most. I think we're gonna have some folklorical dancers. The cheerleading team is gonna be out here, and it's just really great to see the kids out here celebrating with us.
So now, these sidewalks are now being connected to the schools. It has really put us as administrators at ease because now we know that there's at least one area where our kids can be safe. Like I said, we could not have done this without the great partnerships from our county, our county commissioner, and definitely TexDOT, and everybody who's involved in these projects.
And so the county is doing all that we can to try to get as much funding as possible so that we can bring those services to the outer rural areas of the county. We don't think that any one neighborhood- We don't think that any one neighborhood should have less accessibility to services than another neighborhood just because of where it's located.
El Paso goes by many names. Sun City. 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce, with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Go ahead. Commissioner's Court has reconvened into regular open session. It is 9:21 a.m. Item number eight from the regular session, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the county's ongoing response to the lifting of Title 42.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners Eric R. Solis and Gag Leoni, Assistant County Attorney. We're asking for no action on this item, please.
I'm sorry?
Oh, sorry. Just no action on this item.
No action, yeah.
Take no action on item eight. That completes all the items on our agenda.
Just real quick, since we are, it doesn't require action since we are going to allow it to elapse? I would think it'd be a little bit more official for some reason.
So Anna Schumacher, Assistant County Attorney. So we are taking no action today on our existing Use of Purchasing Act discretionary exemptions order to respond to a public health calamity and preserve or protect public health and safety that was passed on December 15 of 2022. When you all approved that item, you said that it would extend through 60 days past the expiration of Title 42, and that day is today. Things are, we're handling it. We have an amazing team who is doing a great job in addressing our day-to-day situation. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Anna, for all your work. And I think the public understands a little bit better why there's no action. So thank you.
Thank you all.
This completes all the items on our agenda, sir.
I don't know what to do or say. I'm sorry, we're going to stay here a little longer. Yes, thank you all, and have a wonderful week. Thank you, production team, and our translators back there. Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting at 9:23 a.m.
Is this the fastest you've ever?